Of Tuesday, February, what's today's date, the eighteenth, twenty twenty five. We convened at five fifteen for an executive session in which we took no action. And that's kind of why we were late coming out just now. And at that time, I asked John whether this meeting was properly warned and he said.
Yes, it is.
That it was.
It was.
And lo, it was. Liz is at home tonight and Franz is also joining remotely. And I will probably need reminding to like, look at the screen from time to time and see if my fellow select board members want to say something. So please bear with me. Okay, first order of business tonight is to approve minutes. We have minutes from February fourth, twenty twenty five. Can I get a motion? Richard?
I move we accept the minutes from February fourth, twenty twenty five as presented.
Okay. Richard's made a motion to approve the minutes from February fourth, twenty twenty five as presented. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from February fourth, twenty twenty five, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
That is five zero. All right. Franz and Liz, I can see you both and I can hear Liz. Franz, you'll just need to unmute. Okay, next order of business is Chair's remarks. Hello, I'm the Chair. And I wanted to kind of like say my usual spiel about how people can engage with this meeting. How you'd be recognized and I want to talk a little bit about our code of conduct. So if you're in the room and you want to speak on an item that's on the agenda. I'll make opportunity to do so on every time we have something new. And then at that time, all you got to do is raise your hand and I will recognize you, which means I will say like, hey, you, you want to speak? And if you do, you'll then come to this microphone, say your name, the town that you live in. And then speak for up to three minutes on whatever the business is, okay? With Zoom, you just got to raise your Zoom hand, it's a whole lot easier, your hand doesn't get very tired. In the Select Board's rules of procedure, which sort of AKA code of conduct. We have a few things and I wanted to just remind everybody about them. So the first one I want to say is that the Chair, which is me, shall rule on all questions of order or privilege. And the Chair's decision shall be final, provided that an appeal may be made by a member of the Select Board to the decision of the Chair as to any rule of order. Furthermore, the Chair will rule on all points of order and state their justification. Any Select Board member may appeal the Chair's ruling on a point of order without being recognized. And the ruling of the Chair may be overruled by majority vote of the Select Board. No party, representative of a party, witness or speaker shall be permitted to make personal attacks on another speaker. A member of the Select Board or any person whatsoever, so basically anyone. No person shall be permitted to interrogate another speaker or any person present at the hearing without that person's consent. And without the permission of the Presiding Officer, which is me, given in advance of any such questions. And then under order, let's see. Select Board members shall act as an example and treat colleagues and members of the public professionally and with respect and courtesy. Performing their duties with honesty, care, diligence, professionalism, impartiality and integrity. And then finally, no person may disrupt, disturb or otherwise impede, except for a point of order, the orderly conduct of the meeting or interruption. Or interrupt any person while they are speaking. And so I just wanted to kind of reiterate some of that stuff so that everyone is clear about how to participate in this meeting. I actually think that we've had a lot of really challenging meetings in this last year. And for the most part, we've conducted them in ways that I think are a credit to us. And so please let that continue all the way through to town meeting and then at least somebody else's problem. And with that, I will pass my mic on to John for Manager's Comments.
Thank you, Daniel. Wanted to start tonight by giving a shout out to our excellent DPW staff. Who have been very busy and have continued to do a, an incredible job with clearing up after all the storms. I wanted to let everybody know that snow will be cleared from parking lots and streets in downtown. Tonight after eleven P M. And just to remember that there's a winter parking ban in effect. And that you got to make sure you're not parked on the streets or in any of the parking areas. Except for the transportation center, you can be parked there, but not in reserved spaces, but in the unreserved. Or if that is full, you can overflow to the Preston lot, I think. Getting a head nod on that. So keep that in mind. I also want to say that the town continues to trust and support our police department staff. Who are not only delivering complex enforcement services every day in a very transparent, compassionate and fair way. But they're operating under a spotlight with, that very few other professionals have to contend with. And I'm asking for everyone to support them in that endeavor. I also wanted to mention how they're going above and beyond in several other areas. For one, I understand that Chief Hardy is switching our approach with media requests. From providing an official statement to any media outlet that asked for it. To starting weekly incident statements. These will be done at a regularly scheduled time with an invitation to any and all media to attend those. Which I highly applaud and appreciate their relooking at that process. Second, I had a chance to attend the third situation table last week. This is a best practice that the Public Safety Enhancement Team brought training to Brattleboro. That the Brattleboro Police, the Fire EMS, the BRAT Unit. And all of the public health and social service organizations in town. All including HCRS and Groundworks, Turning Point, Interaction, Wyndham and Windsor Housing. Brattleboro Housing, Probation and Parole and others. All benefited from this training that we got in a process to evaluate the people who are contributing. Large amounts of disorder and, and themselves are suffering. To figure out structured plans for these people on a kind of a triage basis. That, you know, helps, helps bring all of the different organizations that have a piece of helping somebody do better. Come together to one table and contribute to coming up with a plan to help these people. This, at the, at last week, I learned that two of the four situations that we have already, have already come to the table. Have been resolved. Basically, the risk has been reduced for two people already. And, and that's just fantastic news and I credit the police department, I credit all of the social service organizations. For coming together and working together to try to figure out really good ways to help the, to, to do a triage approach. And help people that are really in need of services and in need of coordinated services. So thank you to everyone who's been participating in this. And I think that's really, it's, it's great to see people building each other up and making their services better and better for everyone. As opposed to tearing each other down. And so that's why the Situation Table and One Brattleboro and some of these other things really think are great. So we've got to keep doing that. So that's it, that's what I had tonight.
Thanks, John, appreciate that. There's a little background noise coming through. I don't know if Liz or Franz, do you have any background noise that might be picked up on your end? Other people on Zoom are probably muted, hopefully. Patrick, you could just check that.
It's in the next hand and cost room.
Yeah. Well, let's hope that that gets resolved. Let's move on for now to Select Board comments and or committee reports. Okay, seeing no interest from my fellow board members, we will move on. Next item of business is public participation. And this is for members of the public to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda. You could also use that opportunity to request that an item be taken from the consent agenda for consideration later on. And so if you wish to be recognized, all you need to do is raise your hand. Bob Ozer has given you a, an example of that there. And I'll recognize you and you could introduce yourself, then you can have up to three minutes to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda. So I will go to Robert. Bob, good evening.
Good evening, Daniel, Bob Ozer, Brattleboro.
We can. Yeah, we can hear you.
I'm getting gestures that maybe not. Anyway, I just wanted to highlight something, I think this was from.
Of the last meeting that we had. And there were two questions that were on the table and I don't know if the answers actually got there. But one was, what was the total or what is the total of EMS expenses? And the other question was, what was the amount paid to Golden Cross to do EMS billing? And I wanted to add something to those questions for the record. In the, in the Golden Cross billing contract, there's a paragraph, I think on page three. Which says that Golden Cross Ambulance, Inc. will provide the town of Brattleboro, Vermont. With current financial and tracking information of EMS activity, monthly or as directed. So that apparently is an answer to one of the questions about the total of EMS expenses. You might have to add in capital expenses for equipment and what have you. But that would be probably a way to answer the question. And I'm wondering if there's a comment on that or just highlight that for the record. Thank you.
I don't think at this time anyone's going to have that number at their fingertips.
Just, I know Chuck here responded to that, to whoever asked the question, I think on email or something. Last week and I think the cost of the billing was, I want to say thirty six thousand, something like that. And the EMS costs are a portion of the four point one million dollar fire department budget. We haven't broken that out, it's very complicated as Bob mentioned. When you start to get into what are the capital costs, the machine rates and everything. How do you break out all of the maintenance, heating and, and lighting and everything in the fire station? How do you break out staffing? And, you know, probably whatever assumptions we made, somebody would disagree with those. So we haven't done that work, but you know, it is something that if the board wants to direct us to do that, we could, we could try to take that on. Really, our emphasis has been on making sure that the billing is working. And I learned today that we have a connection to Medicare now and the VA. And Billy Fritz has been making incredible progress with that. I'm very pleased to, to get his report that that is moving forward. And that's where all of his efforts has been going into that, not into figuring out the cost breakout in the fire department budget.
Okay, thanks, John, appreciate that. Isaac?
Good evening, Isaac Evans, France, candidate for Select Board in the election two weeks from today on March fourth. I wanted to echo what Town Manager Potter, you said about appreciation for the Department of Public Works. I've been noticing in addition to the roadways, the sidewalks getting cleared, which is fantastic for pedestrians. Also wanted to just appreciate the, the folks from the Recreation and Parks Department for the Winter Carnival. That has been awesome part of this town for so many years. I got to be out there this weekend and just, there are so many people who come from out of town to this and as well as folks who live here in Brattleboro. And appreciate all of the, the town staff for the fantastic work that you all do. Thanks.
Great, thanks, Isaac. Next up, Christina.
Yeah, Shayanya, Brattleboro District Eight. On the topic of clearing sidewalks, I was headed into town today. And noticed that the clearing of, of parking spots ended right when free parking began. So it was like all the metered spots on Elliot Street were plowed. And then as soon as you didn't have to pay a meter, it wasn't plowed anymore and you couldn't park. So I just wanted to give some feedback that maybe plowing some parking spots that are free. Right outside of downtown could be prioritized just to make sure that our downtown is accessible to everybody, even people who don't. Have money to pay the meter, but have money to get to downtown and buy things. I don't know how that would work, but I think we need to keep that in mind. And I think that was all I was going to say, yeah, thanks.
Thanks for the feedback, appreciate it. Other people who wish to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda? Yes, sir. Yep.
Hi, Ken Feig, District Eight. I ca, I asked a couple of weeks ago about more information such as things, letters that get to Select Board. Questions if they can be included in the packet. And I think Liz at the time mentioned she was going to check with like open meeting law. But I wasn't really asking whether it was, you know, legal or not. I was just from a, from a citizen point of view, more information to see if we could get more information. That was it.
Okay, thanks for that. Other members of the public who wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. John, would you just give us a summary of what's on?
Will do, so there are five items on the consent agenda tonight. If you approve this agenda, you'll be accepting the terms of an agreement between the town and Witcher Properties LLC. For a litigated tax valuation appeal where the town was originally at, I think in, in the neighborhood of two point nine million assessed for this property. And Witcher was around two point one million and you'll see in your packet where the compromise was there. You'll be approving the town's certification to the state that there are no further appeals or suits pending on the April twenty twenty four grant list. You'll be approving the annual contract renewal for Town Attorney Bob Fisher in the amount of one hundred and twenty eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. You'll be authorizing the use of twelve thousand dollars from DPW's operating accounts. Both in utilities and in highway to outfit the fire department's new bucket truck in exchange for the surplus vehicle. And you'll be awarding a contract to SVE Associates not to exceed seventy four thousand. For civil engineering, design and construction services to implement the one point four million dollar library capital grant that we recently received.
Great, thanks, John.
You're welcome.
Board members, can I get a motion?
A motion.
Peter?
To accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, no discussion on this one, I'm afraid. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda as presented, I guess there could be discussion. If there was a board member that wanted to pull something from the consent agenda, this would be the time to speak up. Okay, then we have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes five zero. We will move on to new business. And our first item of new business is a long awaited, long awaited project update about Bridge Fifty Four. Which is a bridge on Western Avenue. And.
Yep, and.
Can I have Gary coming in on this one?
Gary, Gary LaRoche from V-Trans is joining us tonight and he will update us on some really good work he's done on this project.
Great, welcome, Gary.
Hey, everyone. Good to see you as well. I'll, I'll clear my screen. Get my, I don't use you post-disabled participant screen sharing, could you allow me to share my screen, please?
Yep, just one minute, Gary. Patrick? Just one second, Gary, we, we keep our Zoom locked pretty tight.
No worries. All right, I think it is working now, there it is. I will. Sure. Okay. Can you see, everybody see my screen now? Okay, excellent. All right, I'm here to give a, a project update for the Western Ave, Vermont Nine Bridge. Bridge project. For reduced town share. Here tonight with me, I'm Gary LaRoche, the Vermont V-Trans Project Manager. Here with me tonight, I also have Tiffany Card from Green International. So just, we'll go through a, just a quick agenda. So to present the project tonight. So just go over a quick project locations, existing conditions, the project development process where we currently stand in that process. The, the April second, two thousand twenty four follow-up. Some alternative evaluation recommendation. The technology and innovation deployment program funding was able to acquire for the project. Maintenance of traffic and then get into the finance and maintenance agreement for the project, present the estimate. And then the project schedule. So start off, I think the project location, the Bridge Fifty Four is located approximately one mile west of the, the Interstate ninety one exit two. Adjacent to Melrose Street. Some existing conditions of the bridge, the bridges, original, the arch bridge was constructed in nineteen fourteen. The town of Brattleboro is the owner of this structure. The roadway classification in this area is a class one town highway on the national highway system. The bridge, as mentioned, is a reinforced concrete arch that's sixty feet long with a thirty one point three feet deck out, out width. So the existing bridge rating from a nine, which is excellent to zero, which is failed. The bridge was rated as six as of June, two thousand twenty three. The structure's currently on a. The structure's currently on a twenty four month inspection cycle. So the next inspection for this bridge is going to be in June, two thousand twenty five. So the next inspection for this bridge is going to be in June 2025. Some characteristics of that rating include some cracking with saturation of efflorescence and leakage in the lower portions of the structure, some smaller areas spalling, exposed reinforced concrete in the lower portion of the West Abutment One. And then some minor wearing along the lower portions of both ends. So the, for the V-Trans project development process, at last year's meeting, we had discussed the preliminary plans of the project. Since that time, we have done some evaluation of the bridge alternatives and answered, had some back and forth with Town Manager and Department of Public Works. It's worked, worked through this process. So the purpose of this update as well as, is to move toward executing a finance and maintenance agreement between the town of Brattleboro and V-Trans. So then we could proceed with the final design of the project and then move into environmental permitting and continue with our right-of-way easement acquisition process. And then eventually advertise the project. So during the April 2nd, 2024 Select Board Meeting, the Select Board was concerned with the cost of the project, so we were asked to evaluate, or this board requested either the share to be reduced or come, come up with a more cost-effective solution. So at the conclusion of that, that meeting, we evaluated a full bridge replacement with essentially returned to the scopy report alternatives and evaluated the bridge closure period and as well as the temporary bridge. So during evaluation of the bridge closure period, there was, you know, it's a pretty, pretty long detour route to get all the way around. So we, after that evaluation, we concluded that a bridge closure period of 47 days would be required to construct this, construct this bridge with, if, if a temporary bridge was not installed, as well as night work, pre and post-bridge closure throughout the construction season. So resulting in very high disruption to, you know, adjacent property owners and the community as a result of that alternative. Of V-Trans, we maintained our recommendation as presented in 2021 to proceed with a temporary bridge in this location. And the board conferred that on 7/7/2022, which is what we developed our preliminary plans based on. When we, when we compared the cost of the alternatives, it came within 1%, approximately 1% of each alternative, whether you closed the bridge or you had a temporary bridge. But the primary difference was you would construct the project in one year opposed to two and a half years. So getting into what we were able to do in this location is, you know, I, I worked with Sue Philly in and we're, I tried to evaluate, see if I could find some grant money or whatnot. Then I had an idea of approaching the Federal Highway Administration for some innovation funding for this project. Essentially, and, and what that would do is, and I applied for this innovation funding based on what we're, I'm gonna just, is gonna be described in the following slides, but Federal Highway agreed to, or approved the application I submitted for additional funding in, in, so the towns, I was able to get the town share reduced from 10% to 5% by increasing the Federal Highway's share of the project. So I'll turn it over to Tiffany Card. She's gonna go over what the superstructure or the innovation is for the product design. Sorry, apologies. The innovation design is for the project and then get, go through the maintenance of traffic.
A little bit about why we were able to obtain the innovation funding that Gary spoke to. And that is because we were planning to implement a new type of beam for our superstructure. It is called the Ultra High Performance Bulb T Beam. And it is explicitly fabricated by Fort Miller, which is a large precast concrete and pre-stress concrete fabricator in upstate New York. And what they're really doing is taking existing tested technology within, you know, our world of engineering infrastructure and just applying it in a slightly different way to create a beam that is more durable and stronger than a conventional precast, pre-stress concrete beam and allows for rapid installation. The deck is part of the beam. It is integral with the actual web and bottom flange. When you see the typical section here, you can see us pointing to the bridge deck. And then below that is the rest of the beam. So typically, we would have to, you know, install beams and then pour concrete deck. And you would be held to cure times of concrete, which are, you know, about, you know, 28 days for final cure. So with the deck being cast as part of the beam, that will allow us to install, you know, the superstructure much quicker. And what it does is it uses a different type of concrete called Ultra High Performance Concrete, just in the bottom flange. So the black dots that are shown down there are the pre-stressing strands. And that is what gives the beam its strength to carry loads in tension. And that area is also gonna be protected and given additional strength by using Ultra High Performance Concrete. This is a type of concrete that is much denser and stronger and more durable than conventional concrete. So what this beam type is doing is just taking the material of higher quality and putting it where it is most needed. So it will offer increased protection for those pre-stressing strands, and it will offer increased strength to the beam and tension since we have a single span. So this allows us to minimize our superstructure depth for what we would typically be held to with a conventional concrete type of beam. And this beam type also allows us to have more flexibility in meeting geometry needs for skews and cambers that are typically limiting when it comes to using pre-stressed concrete beams, you know, that are more conventional. And I think we can go to the next slide. So this is our bridge's typical section, showing that we're coming back with, you know, the two sidewalks and just showing the, you know, the initial beam layout here for out-to-out. We're widening our structure to, you know, be consistent with the needs of the corridor and the roadway classification. But we're proposing a simple span, 70-foot span, center to center, and a 30-degree skew so that we can better align with the, the river through this area. Right now, the angle of the bridge relative to the river is kind of creating a little bit of a conflict point on the extreme acute corners, and you're getting some, some scour and some aggradiation. So by adjusting the skew, we'll be able to, you know, align with the stream better. And these beams are more flexible in terms of achieving those higher skew angles than conventional precast, pre-stress concrete beams. And additionally, what you see here is that a new water line will be carried by the, by the bridge as part of this project. And then lastly, we're gonna be proposing integral abutments. Essentially, what this means is it's a, it's an abutment type that allows us to minimize the joint. Oftentimes, most of the deterioration that happens at bridges and the number one cause of the deterioration that you see is road salts and water being able to get down through the top side of the structure to the bearings where the beams sit and cause deterioration over time. So by minimizing that joint size and eliminating it, you'll be able to extend the service life of the structure because it would be less prone to deterioration from road salts and water. So that is why we're going with an integral type abutment. But as far as you would see, it would just be a concrete abutment, very similar to, to conventional structures. It's more in the actual way it's designed, not necessarily in like how you would perceive it, you know, on foot or from, you know, looking outside. For the temporary bridge, we're proposing to provide two lanes of traffic, 24-foot roadway and a pedestrian 5-foot sidewalk. So for this structure type, what we're showing is a proprietary bridge cross-section from a company called Acro. They're the most, you know, heavily represented for these types of prefabricated structures in the area. So this could be very representative of the bridge that you would see in place for the duration of the detour. And here we just show the alignment of the proposed bridge. You can see that we're installing it on the downstream side and that we're coming down and swinging out so that we can cross the river at, you know, an angle that allows us to minimize the span length that's necessary for the bridge. We're trying to make sure that we provide a no-rise condition for FEMA permitting. So we've taken that all into account when doing the hydraulic analysis for the profile that's shown here and the temporary bridge crossing. And it also allows us to tie into the existing roadway and bring cars at an angle that kind of gets it away from the immediate and adjacent properties as much as we can. And we will need to, you know, maintain temporary access to driveways, which are shown here on the plan view as well, while the bridge is in place and the existing bridge is closed. So as I said here, the typical section for the temp bridge, two 11-foot lanes, two 1-foot shoulders with a separated pedestrian accommodation that will provide the 5-foot required for ADA, will provide temporary access to the driveways in that condition. And here we have what we're calling, the temporary bridge, since it's downstream and we're gonna have two-way traffic maintained at all times. There's also gonna be a temporary detour though to access Melrose. In order to do the reconstruction of the bridge, the portion of Melrose immediately adjacent to Western Avenue will need to also be closed as part of the work zone. So what's shown here on the screen is just showing that two-way detour or, you know, two-way direction that would need to be on Melrose for exiting onto Western Ave via George F. Miller Drive. And we will have temporary lighting and fence headlight mitigation in the areas that are shown on the right on the screen. So the red is gonna be temporary lighting to illuminate the, the area in the detour to make it more clear for where the temporary bridge in detour will be. And then in orange, we're gonna be adding headlight mitigation fencing. Those are the locations where the angles of the headlights would be directed towards abutting properties. And the intention there is to obviously mitigate that light from entering and disrupting the local property owners in immediate vicinity to the, to the bridge in the temporary detour.
So moving, moving into the finance and maintenance. So to explain the finance and maintenance agreement, it's an agreement that's overarching project agreement required for all municipally-owned assets to define the responsibilities and for V-Trans to perform activities on behalf of the town. For example, acquiring right-of-way. The agreement, it will define the cost splits for the project. And the current, the cost splits for preliminary engineering are 85% federal, 10% state, and 5% town. Right-of-way was not part of the TIDP money that Federal Highway was going to participate in. So the right-of-way was maintained to be 80% federal, 10% state, 10% town. And construction, of course, is participating in the TIDP, which is 85% federal, 10% state, and 5% town. After, after execution of the finance and maintenance agreement, I just referenced a couple provisions, since, you know, cost is always a concern for, for everyone. That if costs go up more than a certain percentage, then the, the agreement speaks the, you know, what the town may do at future phases of the project. From, from those cost splits, the total estimated cost of the project, including preliminary engineering, right-of-way, and construction, the construction line item also includes construction engineering and the 5% contingency that V-Trans includes in all projects. Totals 13,576,000 and change. And the town's overall share of the project is 681,000 and change. So I guess that, from, from the high level of it all, the overall project design layout from what was presented last year has not been changed except for the addition of the, the Ultra High Performance, the Deck T or Deck Bulb T. And this, these costs are the latest estimated costs in the table above from what we use in our estimating software at the agency for projects that have been recently bid. You know, prices, prices across the country with inflation have been known to increase over time due to inflationary pressures and other, other competitive bidding climate pressures that may be presented in the future. And hopefully, we don't get another pandemic. So the schedule, so assuming that we have finance and maintenance agreement in place by April 1st this year, we, we would target September 2025 to complete our final plans and then, then proceed with con, contract plans or developing contract plans for summer 2026. As of, as of late, the project unfortunately has been pushed due to V-Trans's fiscally-constrained budget. Like a lot of projects across the state, projects have cost more over the past several years. So we haven't been able to construct as many projects. Haven't been able to construct as many projects with the funding that we're, we were able to, sorry. With our fiscally-constrained budget. So for now, V-Trans is planning as a TBD for advertisement and construction dates. But V-Trans is committed to developing the project through, through contract plans and putting the project on their shelf until we have the funds obligated for construction or applicable for construction. And that concludes my presentation. Any, anybody have any questions?
We're being asked to consider signing a financial and maintenance agreement. Richard?
I'm not sure you can answer this, but I'm just curious, given the climate we're living in now, what percentage of the construction materials are domestic from the United States? Or do you have to buy anything from outside the country?
So all, all, all the projects funded by the Federal Highway Administration are required to have Buy America. Buy America. So everything's required to be purchased in the United States. Or so, are your steel and so forth has to be domestic?
First of all, can you?
Okay, great. Well, I wanted to thank Gary and Tiffany, but I also wanted to thank my fellow select board members for asking Gary to rethink the municipal share. And I, I can't thank Gary enough for his work with the Federal Highway Administration. And from what I understand, also Peter Welch's office for allowing us to have a 5% rather than a 10% match. It's so important and we really appreciate it. Your listening and acting on our behalf. I also want to mention, I don't think it's you, Gary, but it's more of a John Potter question that the town has already placed the $500,000 of this amount in reserve. Is that correct, John?
Yes, yes, Liz, we have 500,000.
Five fifteen.
500,000 and 15, 515,000 set aside for this project, so.
So great, so the remaining funds are, are what we're obligating tonight. And or obligating soon. Right?
It's a good question. You know, so we have obligated, we have 515,000 from like a couple of budget cycles ago, I think, right?
Yes.
And so the question remains about the remainder and the timeline and the process in which that would be arrived at.
I can address that if you want. So I think what I heard from Gary was that he's looking for a commitment by April 1st to continue the project moving forward. So if the board wanted to direct us to sign this finance and maintenance agreement, you could, you could consider it for tonight or you could consider it anytime up until April 1st. That would keep it on this schedule or this timeframe that Gary described, which does not have, currently have a start date. So we don't know when V-Trans would want to pull that funding from us. So the additional 166,000 would probably not be necessary in the FY '26 budget. More likely 27 or 28, all depending on where this fits into V-Trans's priorities.
Yeah, seeing a couple of nods there from Gary and Tiffany.
And my last comment is that before the select board does agree, I think that we should just have a session to make sure that we understand how we're being obligated and what the risks and costs could be in the future. And again, Gary and Tiffany, a thank you.
Thanks. I'm mostly going to echo what Liz just said and say how appreciative I am of the effort that went into these changes. I don't know anything about bridge design, but that new fancy concrete sounds great. And it looks like it simplifies matters considerably. So I like that and I definitely like the price. When we talked about this at a prior meeting, I was hoping that 5% match rather than 10% would get us down to the $750,000 range, which was quite a bit more palatable than the $1.5 million range that we were looking at at the time. So I'm very gratified that it came even, it came in even under the $750,000. And I'm sure a lot of work went into this and, and thank you for, for all the effort that went into it.
Blick, we have a couple of people on Zoom with their hands raised. So let's go to Gary and then we'll come back to the room and then we'll go back to Zoom.
About District 8 Chair, a great presentation and all, I really did appreciate, it was, it was excellent, Gary. I guess my question now with the current climate and the tariffs and the prices of things that potentially may go up, import, export. Did you, I wonder if you factored that equation into the future of materials and course they're going to be coming down? If you projected maybe, you know, if this does happen, you know, because you have, what projection date set for construction? You said about what, by 2026, 2020, 30 maybe? How is that going to look? As far as change of course, so I just wanted to get in a better understanding of how you are going to equate that as well. Thank you.
So Gary, for your forecast of the future?
So as mentioned, the advertisement construction dates are, you know, to be determined. You know, the soonest that it could possibly be, I think, is fiscal year '28. You know, up until '30. Hopefully not, not that long, but it depends what future projections bring to agency projects. But as far as projecting the estimate that I had presented tonight, that's, I presented today's, today's costs, inflation values and contractor bidding climates are very, very difficult to project into the, into the future. It can be, you know, depending on, you know, if contractors have a good competitive bidding climate, you're more apt to get, you know, lower, lower costs or lower prices per unit or for each item unit. Opposed to, you know, if we have a lot of projects out there and there's few bidders, then like on projects as of late, bids have come in considerably higher when there's not as much competition. So it's not knowing what we're going to have in three years from now. I, that's why I base the values on, on today and not three years from now.
Domestic is one thing, but if we're importing materials from other countries, that's going to raise the cost of banking.
Thank you. Thanks. Let's hear from folks in the room. Okay, no, seeing none, then let's go to Fidel on Zoom, who I think is David Levinbach.
It is David Levinbach, thank you very much, District 9. It's also a temper of the times question. Suppose Elon Musk doesn't like the bridge. How firm is the Federal Highway Administration commitment?
So let's, let's stay in the realms of facts, but like, I guess your question is like, can we expect anything different from the Federal Highway Administration, Gary? Based on what you know professionally?
Everything shall, you know, should remain consistent, you know, with the Federal Highway. You know, decisions are very, you know, my experience have fairly rarely been overturned or, you know, reversed into the future. So I, you know, I have confidence that, you know, we will, we'll, we'll get this funding.
Ivan Hennessy, Brattleboro, Vermont. How innovative is this new concrete technology that is innovative enough to get extra money for it? It's very exciting and it sounds like the company developing it is familiar with this kind of weather that we encounter. But has it been installed for 10, 15 years in various places?
Great question, thank you. Gary or Tiffany, are you able to answer that?
Sure. The ultra-high performance concrete has been recently implemented into the new ASHTO codes. So there's, there's been, you know, industry experience with, with it enough to get it into the codes and established. And I'll turn it over to Tiffany to talk further about the materials and their use.
Great, thank you. So I would say that with a lot of innovation, like many innovative products, what we're doing is actually not using brand new technology. We're taking tested materials and tested applications and just kind of using it in a slightly different new way. So ultra-high performance concrete has been used for going on 10 years. New York State actually has been using it for about that long. So there are locations where, you know, this material has been in place and performed successfully. And there has been years of testing and, you know, standards, ASHTO standards on the material to back up its use. And there is technical specifications that will be required for them to adhere to, to ensure quality and performance that we would require and expect of the material. And then the integration of a deck into a beam is, you know, practice that's been going on for a while. There's many beams in Ront right now that are called next beams that do the same thing. They have a deck that is part of the, the beam itself and it accommodates rapid installation. And then similarly, the pre-stressing strands that we show are used throughout the state in beams that have been used and tested. It's really just the combination of the UHPC concrete around those pre-stressing strands. So while it is innovative and worthy of the funding, we're using materials and technology that has been tested. It's just being combined in a slightly different way for the first time.
As really about this finance and maintenance agreement. Are we ready to go ahead with that or do you want to have more time? Liz was proposing that we have, you know, another perhaps conversation about this. Another date? Liz, maybe you want to speak to that a little bit more since it was your proposal?
Uh, yeah, I just want to make sure that we all understand what we're.
Getting the town for and what overruns could be and so forth. So I don't consider it major. I'm, I'm all in favor of this project and this agreement. I just think that we should, you know, be obligated to be responsible select board members and make sure we fully understand what we're agreeing to.
Okay. Other board members thoughts on that? And then Franz?
Even though I, I don't see much changing in, in this conversation, this is work that needs to be done. I think probably kind of hitting a pause and making sure we fully know how it impacts us is not a terrible idea.
Okay, Franz?
Once again, I find myself echoing Liz and thinking that that's the right way to go.
Okay, and so that would be unless there's some reason why that would be allowable in executive session. I can't think of why it would. Okay, so we will have this come back at our next meeting if possible?
I, I would suggest that we not do it at your joint meeting.
No, not, not at that, but our next regular meeting.
Your next special meeting replacing the regular meeting on March 4th. You'd like to bring it then?
Yes, please, yeah, yeah.
We'll see what can do.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Gary, Tiffany, I appreciate the presentation. We're going to have a little bit more time to consider it. I'm hopeful that we will get to a point where we can sign something and that will be before April 1st.
Excellent. Yeah. Any, any questions come up along the way, feel free to reach out and, or any revisions we can.
That is, as need be.
Great, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Great, thanks everyone. You too.
Okay, very good. So that is that. So we're going to move on to our next item, which is the FY '24 audit findings discussion. John and Patrick, where does a memo? And I'm guessing that you want to talk about it.
Yeah, I'm happy to talk about it. So the town recently completed its annual third-party financial audit, an important process that ensures transparency, accountability and compliance with financial regulations. The audit provides an independent review of the town of Brattleboro's financial statements and internal controls. This helps to identify areas for improvement before they become major issues. This year's audit confirmed that the town's financial management processes are functioning as intended, with findings primarily highlighting procedural refinements rather than fundamental concerns. The audit identified two significant deficiencies, both of which were procedural and did not rise to the level of material weaknesses. In other words, while there are areas where the internal controls could be strengthened, there is no indication of fraud, financial instability or major financial misstatements. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the two findings. The first was regarding the loan for Living Memorial Park, the 4.1 million dollar loan, which was properly disclosed in debt schedules but was not initially recorded in financial statements as expected by the auditor. This was a classification issue, not a financial mismanagement concern. Corrective actions have already been taken to align future reporting with auditor expectations. And the second finding was around trial balance adjustments. So transitioning, the town transitioned to the OpenGov financial system during FY '24 and that led to some inconsistencies in account labeling and fixed asset accounting when the system went over to the, the new, the new approach. These were procedural issues related to system migration and staff have already implemented new review processes to prevent any recurrence where we ever to transition a system again in the future. To further strengthen financial controls, the town is adopting enhanced year-end procedures, a pre-audit checklist, which we would like to set up with the auditor, and clearer communication protocols with the auditor. These proactive steps will improve our efficiency and accuracy in future audits. While some have raised concerns about the town's financial outlook, the facts demonstrate a well-managed, fiscally responsible municipality. This FY '24 audit confirms it and shows no material weaknesses and only procedural refinements. This year, the town intentionally, as you know, intentionally used resources from its 2 million general fund balance to respond to a public safety crisis downtown and to cover unavoidable increases in the solid waste collection costs. While this was an unusual use of reserves for the town, it was fully in line with town policy, which recommends consideration of keeping 10% fund balance if and when possible. We have a reserve, a rainy day fund to address unplanned emergencies like the chaos downtown last summer. If the town maintained a $2 million reserve year after year, making small interest on that without ever using it, people would begin to wonder why they were taxed to begin with and why it was just sitting there in a fund. Importantly, the town staff have a plan to rebuild the rainy day funds in the general fund over three years if the select board wishes, balancing fiscal responsibility with the need to maintain municipal services. Some critics have drawn comparisons to the financial crisis of 2005 when the town had no fund balance and had to take an emergency loan just to meet payroll. However, 2025 is nothing like 2005 and here's why. The 2005 crisis was caused by mismanagement of one or two federal grants. Today, the town has five to six active federal grants managed by a full-time grants administrator. Today, the town has five to six active federal grants managed by a full-time grants administrator and reviewed in consistent, clean audits, including this one for FY24. The town's financial position is significantly stronger than in 2005 and even stronger than in 2011 after previous financial reforms. As the FY24 audit shows, there was nearly $16 million in total fund balances if the town ever needed to cover a short-term liability. In other words, we are not in a position where we'd have to borrow to meet payroll. Additionally, debt levels for the town remain well within conservative financial policies. We're currently carrying about a $10.2 million debt, estimated debt, with a current $18 million cap in the select board's policies. So this is room to consider responsibly investing in critical infrastructure needs like the DPW yard renovation and the town pool when appropriate. The select board actively engages in financial oversight, receiving quarterly financial reports from staff, independent third-party audits confirming compliance, like the one we're talking about tonight, and regular public updates with budget-to-actual reports available online. Financial decisions are made with transparency, with publicly available reports, recorded meetings, and open discussion opportunities. Brattleboro is committed to financial responsibility while being mindful of taxpayer burdens. However, the reality is that neighboring communities already spend 8% to 10% more per capita on municipal services than we do. While the town continues to seek efficiencies and cost reductions, it's important to recognize that municipal services come at a cost and are being delivered in a competitive environment. Brattleboro is not in financial crisis. The FY24 audit confirms that the town's financial systems are sound, transparent, and well-managed. With proactive improvements already in place, Brattleboro is financially stable, well-positioned for the future, and committed to responsible, transparent financial management.
Okay, thank you, John. Questions from the board about this report on the audit? Okay, Richard?
Curious thing, have we fully implemented the OpenGov software through all the departments?
John?
We have fully implemented it on the financial side. I believe we are in the process of implementing on the asset management, which ultimately will tie into that and be very helpful for our long-term capital management planning once that's all, all the information, the data is into the system. And then permits, I believe, is partially implemented for several systems in several departments, but there is more planned for that.
Okay, other board members with comments on this audit report? France?
Yes, thank you, Daniel. I just want to add that I've been through this a couple of times now with John in our weekly sessions and initially had some questions about why we had some red flags of one variety or another waving and other issues that have potential long-term impacts on town finances. But I think he's answered them to my satisfaction, at least for now. And these are things that we'll need to track carefully going forward, including the fund balance and looking at any plan to restore us to a more normal level of fund balance, that being a concern of mine. But for now, I think we're in solid enough shape that we don't have to do anything rash or sudden and we can move forward, but with a keen eye on the future to make sure that we're meeting our responsibilities.
Okay, thank you. Liz?
I want to thank John for meeting with the auditor and giving us such a good report on not only the audit report, but also our town finances.
Great, thank you. Okay, well, let's hear from the public, members of the public with questions, comments about this report on the FY24 audit. Okay, a couple of people on Zoom. So let's hear from Christina first.
Sorry. All right. Well, thank you for that report. And, and, and I was, you mentioned, John, that the spending from the unassigned fund balance was totally in line with town policy. And I was unaware that there was a town policy on that. And if you could send that to the finance committee, that would be much appreciated. I am aware of guidelines that were written by the select board over a decade ago that do outline the unassigned fund balance spending and the guidelines for that spending. And as long as there are, there are, what was the wording? Basically, an emergency situation, then you could, you could use those funds for ongoing expenses. But the guidelines that the select board made for spending that money specifically recommend against using that money for ongoing expenses. So I just wanted to point that out when you said that it was totally in line with town policy. I would love to see that town policy if you could, but otherwise, as far as I knew, there were only guidelines. And, um, yeah, I'm not going to repeat myself on that. So my other question was, for the article that RTM will be voting on, the one that refers to the audit that we basically, what does it say? To accept, Article 4, to act on the town's auditor's report that RTM will be voting on. Is that? I was wondering if you, if anyone there could explain to us what the town meeting reps are actually voting on when we're voting to accept this audit?
Mm-hmm. It's a good question. I don't know if I could answer it with total confidence. I think it is as simple as we're accepting it, right? It's like the audit has done the work, they've produced the audit, and now we're saying, okay, thank you. John or Patrick, I don't know if either of you have a take on that?
I know we spoke with Bob about this. Do you recall that conversation at all, Patrick?
If there's something more to it than what you just said, Daniel, I would have to hear that. I think we should ask Bob.
Let's ask the town attorney. Christina, I don't think we had a game.
Okay, yeah, I emailed him. I haven't heard back from him.
Really want to know is what, what happens if, if that article doesn't pass? It sounds like absolutely nothing. And if that's the case, then why is it an article for us to vote on? That's all. Thank you.
You're welcome. That's a good question.
And I think it may have to do with our bond rating and, you know, an approved audit would help the town be in a better position to take on debt in the future.
Okay, seems fair. Let's hear from Bob.
Hello, Bob Ozer, Brattleboro. I think this got addressed, but I guess not explicitly unpacked because the auditor's report uses a word that might get people a little edgy. And they use it three times, that the general fund, the development fund, and other governmental funds all reported deficits. So could you unpack that? Because I didn't quite hear an explanation of why that was looked at by the auditors as a deficit.
Icon? I mean, this is what Patrick explained at your last meeting when we were talking about this during the financial report. And essentially, the, the, yeah, there was a deficit in the general fund. And that was planned. It was a planned deficit for that fiscal year. The board and the town meeting approved that we would use, I think, something like 1.2 million in reserves to keep the tax rate down in FY24. That's what we did. There were several other areas that the budget did not perform as planned. One of those was in tax revenues. And I think, do you have the numbers, Patrick?
Do you want me to show that again?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Sure. Give me just a second.
All right, stand by for numbers.
All right.
Give that screen a little tap, Patrick. Give the screen a little tap. It's flickering glitchy.
Yes. All right, so let me get this on Zoom. Oops, where's that? Okay. Occasionally that needs a tap. Okay, so this was, oh, and by the way, there's some hard copies here if anybody's interested. Otherwise, you can look at it from the screen here. The point I was trying to make two weeks ago was this, that there seemed to be some degree of unease with the fact that we completed fiscal '24 with a deficit. And what I was trying to show here on this particular table was that while column A is what was adopted by Representative Town Meeting, there are two line items on the revenue side for which we had no expectation that there would be a check arriving as revenue. In fact, that in particular, use of fund balance of a little over, almost $1.1 million is essentially saying, we're going to spend this amount and we're going to pay for some of it in real-time taxes, but some of it is going to draw down our savings account, rainy day fund, unassigned general fund balance, whatever you want to call it. And so really, another way to look at column A is in column B, which shows about a $1.2 million deficit. That's what was planned. And that's the difference between a budget and accounting. From an accounting perspective, what we were showing was a $1.2 million deficit. Now, we completed the year in fiscal '24 a little off from that of about $300,000 or so. We finished the year with a $1.5 million deficit. And I think it's important to try and point out a little bit where that variation lives. You might think it's on the expense side, and it is to a small degree. There's about $76,000 in additional expenditures. Keep in mind, this was also a year in which there was over $80,000 in unplanned and unbudgeted private security expenses, which was sort of the precursor to some of the law enforcement activities today. So there was a, an excessive expense to the tune of $76,000. And that's something we should have seen coming and, you know, potentially can try and manage better in the future. But the vast majority of the variation exists on the revenue side. And it exists in two places, a little bit sort of all over the place where, you know, maybe permit income didn't come quite in. All of that totals about $63,000. There we go. But the vast majority of the variation exists in current taxes or property taxes. You see there, it's about $224,000 in uncollected property taxes. And I guess the point I'd like to make tonight that I didn't make two weeks ago is this, that this particular fiscal year is the first in our history that I'm aware of where we did not follow through with the tax sale. And the reason for that stems from legislation that took place up in Montpelier the previous year, which turned the tax sale process from a one-year or an every-year initiative to something that took two years. This is the transition year. And so this is the first year for which no tax sale was conducted. Now, we will do a tax sale for this remaining sum of 224. And if history is a teacher, we will collect basically all of that. That won't do anything for fiscal '24 because fiscal '24 has now been fully audited and put to rest. What it will do is benefit fiscal '25. And I don't have any opinion about that. It's just it will be recorded as additional revenue in fiscal '25 before this year is over.
Okay, thanks for that reminder.
Appreciate that. And I believe, I think there was also reference to maybe the parking fund or the utility fund. And I believe those were also planned deficits, Patrick?
Yes, they both were.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact.
This was all planned. Yes, they show up in the audit as deficits, but that's what Town Meeting and the Select Board approved us to be doing.
Okay, thank you. Let's hear from Kate. And then I want to remember that there are people in the room, so if you want to speak, just got to raise your hand. Good evening.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Hey, just fine, if you would just.
Yep, yep, it's Kate O'Connor from Brattleboro. And I want to, I want to say first, thanks for putting the audit discussion on the agenda. I really appreciate it. I do, however, want to take issue with, and it's not going to surprise you, with a couple of things the town manager said. I just want to make sure everybody understands that the audit does in no way characterizes or analyzes our fiscal situation. It looks at our books. So it only looked at our books through June 30th, 2024. It has nothing to do with fiscal year 2025 or fiscal year 2026, which is the budget we're working on now. So I totally disagree with the town manager's comments that we're not in a fiscal crisis. I think that's not going to come as a surprise. So I just want to make sure everybody out there who is watching this, you can look at the audit and it makes no characterization of our financial situation. And it actually says that very clearly that they don't do that. And so, and it doesn't account for FY25 and '26. So I just want people to know what the audit is. And it doesn't characterize or analyze what our situation is. So I still believe we are in a budget crisis. And I guess we're going to find out next year whether that's true or not. So thank you, thank you again. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Kate. Stick with for a second. So we're talking about like characterization, right? So would you say that the audit characterizes Brattleboro as being in a financial crisis?
Does the town consider us? I'm sorry.
Characterization, so would you say that this audit characterizes us as being in a financial crisis?
It doesn't characterize us in any way. It ends, the analysis is for FY24. So the analysis of our town finances in this audit ends on June 30th, is through 2024. It doesn't say whether we're in a fiscal crisis or not. And my point is, it makes no characterization, but it also doesn't include FY24, I mean, I'm sorry, FY25 and FY26. So, you know, you know, so we've done a lot since this audit has been out. So I think to say we're not in a fiscal crisis, the budget, the audit doesn't say that, that, that one way or another. And, and where we are now is different than June 30th, 2024.
Okay, but, all right. Yeah, no, it makes total sense. I think, you know, you wanted to have a discussion of the audit. We've, you know, we've met with the auditor, we've checked in to find out more about their findings. I felt like the presentation was fair and, you know, John kind of added some additional.
Yeah, I would disagree with Kate O'Connor. I think that the, while the audit shows that we have $16 million in, in the bank essentially, and we've used $800,000 of that this fiscal year. year. So I think what the audit shows is there, that we're not in a crisis where we're going to have to borrow money or borrow additional money to cover any expenses, which is what I would call a financial crisis, but others can have different thoughts on that.
Okay. All right. Let's hear from Millicent.
Hi, just a quick question. What is a tax sale?
Real quick.
Can you hear my question?
Introduce yourself real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry. Millicent Cooley, District Nine. I have a question. What is a tax sale?
Great. John or Patrick, what's a tax sale? It's not a tag sale, that's for sure.
So I am confident the town attorney could probably give a more thorough answer, but from my observations over the years, a tax sale is essentially this. When tax bills are issued, they're issued with four installments. At the end of the fourth installment, on the due date of the fourth installment, if you have a remaining balance, then you become delinquent with your taxes. There is a whole process that takes about six months, I believe, and it starts with a bunch of letters and then increasingly more dramatic letters. And all of this leads to the eventual tax sale where the property is essentially put up on auction for the value of the taxes owed. I can tell you, the previous year, the one right before fiscal '24 in '23, I think there were something like 100 parcels that entered that whole tax sale process, but none of them actually were still there by the time the tax sale itself took place. So what that meant was that over the course of sending out these letters and informing the public that, you know, your property is potentially up for auction for the value of the taxes owed, that has a tendency to motivate folks to come in and pay their taxes. And so that process, if done year after year after year, is the way in which fairness is maintained amongst all the property taxpayers. Because if, if your neighbor is allowed to get away without paying their taxes, well then, you know, why should you pay yours? So there is a fairly involved process that folks would go to, and that process invariably leads to taxes getting collected.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone in the room? Okay, Gary? It's a lively participation from the Zoom folks, but the room, I don't know.
You got to wake them up. Mike, I guess a quick question. I don't know who can answer this, either Patrick or John or either you, Daniel. I was just trying to figure out, revenue, other expenses, other, what does that represent? Just trying to get an understanding.
Okay.
What's that amount?
Into the chart that Patrick showed just before?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I mean, it didn't strike me as indicative of any one thing, you know? Planning fees were a little less than expected. Town clerk recording fees were a little less than expected. My point was that there was about $62,000 in various revenues spread out across, you know, 50 lines or more, the net result of which was at $62,000. So the vast majority of the uncollected revenue came in the property tax line, and that's something that we anticipate fully collecting before the tax sale process concludes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben.
All right. In the room, Isaac.
Isaac Evans, France, Brattleboro. Thank you for the report, the analysis of that auditor's report. That was very helpful to hear, so thank you to the town manager for that. One of the things that the town manager brought up is the decisions that were made late last summer, early fall by the Select Board, having to do with taking funds from a reserve fund to pay for ongoing expenses in the police department. And I know that the, at the January 21st meeting, I had read the statement from the Finance Committee asking for an explanation of how some of the cuts and deferrals from the FY '26 proposed budget would impact the FY '27 budget. In advance of Town Meeting, that's going to be later in March, interested to know if that might be something the Select Board would consider providing for the Town Meeting members to be able to analyze how the upcoming budget, proposed budget, would, and some of the cuts and deferrals would impact the following budget.
Okay. Thanks. I would say we are testing the limits of germaneness. I think it's an interesting question. I just don't think it's relevant to the FY '24 audit. You know, maybe we can take up that question another day. There's a little bit of time between now and Town Meeting. Real quick, yeah.
Yeah, this is just in response to the town manager's comments about the audit. Thanks.
Do you want to respond? I can try a little bit.
Okay.
So first of all, both Isaac and Christina, we're talking about ongoing expenses, and that's not what the board did last fall. They created a new program to address an emergency situation. That's not ongoing expenses. That's a new program. The, looking at how that impacts future years is really not, not so much an audit, you know, issue. It's, it will be eventually in the future, but projecting what future years are doing is a very complex thing to do. It can have some downsides. For example, one of the biggest factors would be collective bargaining. So as folks know, we'll be going into our collective bargaining in the summer. We could project what, what the, you know, different scenarios would be with that. It would be making wild assumptions that we, it would either be making wild assumptions that may or may not turn out to be true, so how much value do you put in those? Or it would be projecting our budget before negotiations, which could put the town at a disadvantage in those conversations. I'm not saying that it would, but that's just a factor to consider. So I'm a little hesitant to be making all sorts of assumptions and trying to guess what the future is going to be. We don't even know what is happening at the federal level, and that's very hard to predict so, at the moment. So, so yeah, that's my initial reaction to that, Isaac. It's just, it's very complicated, and it could be disadvantageous to the town.
Okay. Thanks, John. Let's hear from Dick.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Daniel. And thank you, John, for your explanation. A couple of weeks when we had this conversation... Pardon?
Mr. Dick DeGray.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, I just wanted to introduce you.
Oh, well, it's always nice when you get introduced. A couple of weeks ago, when we had this conversation, a couple of things came out. And I, and I think, Daniel, they talked about the board being apprised of the deficits at a, I believe, September meeting. And I went back and looked at the agenda for September, and there was nothing that was discussing the previous year's allocations and expenditures. And the other thing where, John, you just talked about, of the $16 million that you have just talked about, how much money of that is restricted money that is not available for the town to use? When you make a statement like that, I am concerned about keeping financial accountability within the budget structure. And then if you, if you're making an analysis of saying, well, we do have this big pile of money over there, the financial constraints seem to go out the window. And then lastly, I would agree with everything in the budget, but the budget showed that we had a deficit in revenue and an over expenditure in line items. And as I said two weeks ago, if it wasn't for Public Works staying $200,000 under budget, we would have been way over. So can you tell me, I see where it is, but how is the town going to make up those deficits? Where are we going to take the money to make up for the deficit in revenue and the over expenditure? Thank you.
Thanks. Any thoughts on that? Sure. So the, I think the first statement was about the quarterly financial report at the end of FY '24, and I think that, I think that Dick said that was in September, but I think that actually was a meeting in August when Kim Frost reported out on that full year. And the numbers changed a little bit because there's a two-month period after the close where there's still different expenses made to accounts or revenues that come in and can get applied to the previous year. So, but essentially, what she reported there is what's in the audit. I mean, they're, they're pretty much the same numbers. They changed around a little bit. I think that was the comment, or the comment. The second thing, of the, there are some funds that are restricted, but they, that could, there's also plenty in there that is not and could be borrowed against on a short-term basis so that we wouldn't have to go to a bank or something and pay interest, where we could borrow it from ourselves and put it back into the, the use that it was intended for. And then the third thing was, I forget, deficit, something about deficits.
I guess like addressing the deficit in future budgets. I mean, I, I don't know, Dick, if you're still listening, whether within that question there was an assumption that, you know, the town dipped below its 10%. You know, so we, we keep a reserve, which is equivalent to 10% of our general fund budget, and it's, as Christina pointed out, it's like based on a guideline. John, you were saying policy, and Christina asked to see something about that. Guideline, you know, allows for some flexibility. The board made a conscious decision to use funds from, you know, that, back in the fall. And then, so like, within that, there's a question of like, well, you know, and Francis has been kind of asking this, like, will we make a plan to replace those funds to build it back up to 10% of the general fund balance? And I think in your presentation, you spoke to a possible three-year ways to do that that's kind of meeting the guideline and also being fiscally responsible to the taxpayer. And I think that that's business for the next board and the next cycle.
Yep, the next several boards, yep.
Right. Okay. Other questions about the FY '24 audit report? The audit is available for those that wish to read it. It's about this thick. It's on the town website. It will be in the town report. The Representative Town Meeting members will have available in advance. And so I guess if you were to read it and you were to have a question, would it be okay for folks to send us an email? Of course it would be okay.
Absolutely.
You know? Yeah, send the town manager's office an email with your detailed question about the audit, and we will do our very best to collate that information in readiness for Town Meeting. And also in the meeting, we'll have questions about that as well. All right. Eight o'clock. We usually take a little body break here for everybody, so let's take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back for our next item. Um, we were at, uh, new business item C, the Global Warming Solutions Fund allocation. Um, and Stephen Dodson, I'm assuming, is here to present, unless you're just here for fun as well?
Only if you need me to present.
Okay. Uh, so Stephen Dodson, Sustainability Coordinator, is going to present about this. And Stephen, take it away.
I can summarize a little bit why I'm here for the benefit of the public, just kind of a review of my memo. But I'm, uh, I'm approaching the board tonight asking for approval of use of the Global Warming Solutions Fund for a major project at the library. This project would put rooftop solar on the library and commit $200,000 of the Global Warming Solutions Fund to that project. Earlier tonight, you all approved on consent the moving forward of the major renovations at the library, which include installing a new roof. Uh, the installation of a new roof creates a very good opportunity to install solar. You don't want to think about installing solar 15 years into the life of a roof because that impedes the life of the array. So this is a unique kind of period of time that we could do this for the library. We have the funds in the Global Warming Solutions Fund that can only be used for emissions reductions and other energy generation, uh, steps such as this. And in my memo, I kind of walk you through what the other potential projects could be in the next year or so, so you can understand not just what you're approving we do, but understand what we won't be doing and why this is perhaps the best, most impactful use of that fund. Um, so I can entertain all sorts of questions about that. Um, the fund balance currently is around $212,000. Uh, we have conservatively estimated that $200,000 would ensure that the solar project gets done. The grant funds that were given to the library are primarily intended to cover the essential upgrades and changes to that facility that they've been aiming for for a very long time. With inflation as it's been and with, uh, the uncertainty around the cost of things like solar panels being imported from abroad, they're expecting prices will expand, the cost of that project will increase. So in a sense, we're ensuring that the solar can get done, but prioritizing use of the grant for the key essentials of that renovation project, um, which, uh, Star can speak to. I know she's going to be online if you want to hear more details about the larger project. Um, she could answer those. I'm more here for the solar. Um, I can summarize other projects that are kind of in development if you want to hear that part of the memo. Um, but what would be useful to the select board at this point?
Um, I mean, I felt like the memo was pretty detailed. Um, so really what we're talking about here is authorizing, you know, use of these funds, um, for this particular project. So if there's anything more that you want to talk about with like this particular project's benefits maybe? And maybe if other board members have particular things that they desire, could speak up?
Well, this project's different than other uses of the fund recently in that it is a renewable generation project. Um, other recent uses of the fund have been more replacing gas with electric equipment, building, buying electric vehicles, uh, doing pre-work for charging stations. We made a large investment at the ice rink to transition to a natural refrigerant, which was a huge emissions decrease. Uh, so really we're, we're coming, both myself and the library are approaching the board because there is a limited amount left in this fund at this point, but there's enough to do a big project. And there's a concern that if we allow smaller projects to kind of eat away and erode that, we won't have the amount needed to do this really impactful stuff. EV charging stations and the like are great. Ele- electric landscaping equipment, it's great. It doesn't have both the, uh, financial and environmental payback as solar panels on the library would. So really it's both trying to prioritize the most impactful and cost savings-heavy, uh, steps that we could take while admitting that this is a tight time for the town budget and we want to ensure that we use this resource well.
Okay. Thanks, Stephen. Um, Liz?
Uh, thank you, Daniel. Uh, I wanted to thank Stephen and to, um, say, say something that I think Daniel will agree with, and that is, this is precisely the type of action that, that select board that Daniel and I were a part of envisioned with creating the Global Warming Solutions Fund in that we could add on a sustainable aspect to a project, uh, using this funding. Um, that's, that's an add-on to the original construction program. So I'm really happy that, um, this project has been identified and it's being used. And, um, commend both Stephen and Star for this work. Um, there is one thing I wanted to clarify on page 56 of 95. No, 57. Stephen makes the statement that it is likely that the annual allotment will be paused. Uh, the select board has, uh, made that pause in the proposed budget. And I, I, I just want a little bit of more clarity that, that the budget that will be before the RTM voters has in fact paused that, uh, this funding for the, for that next fiscal year. And, um, I just want to make sure that, that that's the fact.
Right, that's a fair question. Uh, John or Patrick able to weigh in on that?
It, did, did, is Liz's question was, uh, the contribution reduced for the Global Warming Solutions Fund in fiscal '26?
Yes.
The answer is yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes. All right. Okay. Um, other board members with questions or comments for Stephen? Richard?
Well, this was extremely comprehensive and, uh, I, I don't have any questions because I think you did a really good job of explaining everything.
Okay, great. Uh, Peter, Franz? Franz, Peter?
All seems in order to me. It seems like a good use of the funds and, um, I see no problem going ahead with it.
Okay, great. Peter?
Man, Kathy used to say, what's not to like?
What's not to like? Very good.
Can I make one comment before you move on with your motion perhaps?
Yeah, I, I'll make a little comment as well, but you go first.
I was just going to point out that, um, about two months ago, the select board approved the town using, uh, clean energy tax credits uh, as a means of funding certain projects like this. At this point in time, of course, we didn't, aren't sure what's going to happen with all those tax credits, but the solar ones look to be benefiting jurisdictions that are Republican, that are red, and they are the least likely to go away in the eyes of the analysts right now. So, uh, this is a commitment to expend $200,000 from the Global Warming Solutions Fund, but if we're able to tap those tax credits, we'll be able to recoup 30% or even 40% of that in, in the initial investment if those tax credits remain there. So that's just good, good information to have.
Great.
I'm noticing we're using a lot of crystal balling tonight.
Yes, it, it is that time in our lives, I guess. Um, I think that, you know, the rationale, um, for like there being an environmental, um, you know, benefit as well as a financial benefit is really important, um, to both, you know, the townspeople as folks that are really interested in, you know, taking kind of environmental action, um, as well as in this moment where we're kind of wrestling with a challenging budget, you know, being responsible with how we spend our money. So I thank you, Stephen. Um, we will need a motion.
I'll give.
And, uh, I would love to take it from you.
Okay. Um, I motion that we approve of the Town of Brattleboro committing $200,000 to the Global Warming Solutions Fund to pay for the rooftop solar project at Brooks Memorial Library.
Great, thank you, Peter. Um, let's go to the public and then we'll come back to the board for any further discussion on that motion and a vote. Uh, Frick?
Rick Spright, District Nine Town Meeting Rep. And also a member of the Energy Committee. Um, I, uh, think this is a fantastic use of our, uh, resources and, uh, I, um, the idea that we could get some of it back and recycle it back into the fund is fantastic. Um, hopefully it won't cost as much as we fear it will, and that would also be fantastic. Um, and I'd also like to point out, uh, as a town meeting rep, that, uh, what ends up in the budget is, uh, yet to be determined. Um, could go up and down in a number of different ways. Uh, the fact that we have a well-funded sustainability coordinator that I think has turned out to be in for the town was, uh, thanks to a town meeting that, uh, sadly I missed, but I was very proud of their efforts and that was outside of the select board's recommendations. Um, so, uh, who knows what will happen? Again, crystal balling.
Yeah.
Reminds me of the old Chinese curse, man, you live in interesting times. Definitely doing that.
Thanks, Frick. Um, yeah, and we had a couple of emails as well from other Energy Committee, uh, members who are supportive of this project, so thank you to those. Other members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Okay, so let's bring it back to the board. Peter made a motion, uh, to approve of the Town of Brattleboro committing $200,000 of the Global Warming Solutions Fund to pay for a rooftop solar project at Brooks Memorial Library. Are we ready to vote on that? Looks like it. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes 5-0. There you go. Congratulations.
Great evening.
Thanks. Um, okay, next up, we have item D, Homestead Property Tax Rebate Information Campaign. And Seth and Jennifer are going to come up and speak to us about this campaign. And we await your presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we're here to talk about the PSA that the town's been developing, about the homestead declaration and the Vermont Property Tax Credit. Um, so as I mentioned in the memo, um, this project began with initial conversation between myself and the folks from the assessor's office. And, um, they explained how the process worked and it became very clear quickly that, um, it's pretty complex, um, mostly just because everyone has a unique tax situation. So if we're going to create a PSA that was aimed at a general audience, we'd really need to zoom all the way out. And, um, we kind of shaped the message for the campaign around two basic facts. Um, number one, the state of Vermont requires taxpayers to file a homestead declaration every year. And number two, filing the homestead declaration enables taxpayers to then apply for the Vermont Property Tax Credit. Um, so we worked together to produce a video and, um, after some feedback, we created a second draft, um, which we'll be showing tonight. And, um, the thought was this video could be used in several ways. Um, this could be embedded on the website and a blog post, um, which could include hyperlinks to the webpages and documents mentioned throughout the video. And, um, we could also share the video on social media, the newsletter and BCTV. And, um, I should also mention that when we were putting this video together, um, Jen had actually mentioned that, um, the state had updated its website in November of 2024 um, with all of this information. And, um, there is, uh, this one particular document, um, the Vermont Property Tax Credit, which is available at the assessor's office, and, um, it's pretty comprehensive. It's also available on, um, their website, tax.vermont.gov if people are looking for some information after seeing this presentation here tonight. Um, but that said, um, if we could play the video and let's hear some feedback.
So I'm going to try and play the video. I don't know that I've ever done a screen share that had sound.
Oh, okay.
So I'm not entirely sure where the sound is going to come from.
Right.
I think maybe here, but let's find out.
Let's see.
You're that rich, beautiful sound.
Uh-huh.
Hmm.
Yeah. Is this?
Sounds good, doesn't it?
Sounds great.
That is totally not helpful.
Is it this? Who was that doing that handwriting there?
Filing the homestead declaration form is important.
Let's start over.
Whether you're a new homeowner or have been living in the green cotton state for years, understanding the homestead declaration and property tax credit could help save you on.
Use your own microphone.
Homeowners in Vermont are required to file a homestead declaration, even if they aren't obligated to file a tax return. In Vermont, all property is considered non-homestead unless it's declared as a homestead by the property owner. Filing the homestead declaration form is important because it is required by the state of Vermont and because you may be eligible for a state property tax credit based on your household income and other factors. Most people submit a homestead declaration along with a property tax credit claim form when they file their income tax return. You can file these claims using the state's online filing service, MyVTax. Visit the website, tax.vermont.gov for step-by-step instructions on how to file using the online portal. You can also file using a paper form. Use Form HS122 to file a homestead declaration and property tax credit claim. The Vermont Property Tax Credit can help homeowners pay their property taxes. You may be eligible for this credit if your property qualifies as a homestead and you meet all of the other eligibility requirements. You can learn more about eligibility criteria and find guidance for applying on tax.vermont.gov. Remember, if you're a Vermont homeowner, you must declare your property as a homestead. Not only is it required by the state, a homestead declaration is the first step in applying for the Vermont Property Tax Credit. For more information about the topics covered in this video, visit tax.vermont.gov or vtlawhelp.org. If you have questions about the Vermont Property Tax Credit, call 802-828-2865 or toll-free in Vermont at 866-828-2865.
Okay. I want to apologize to whatever curveball I just threw, BCTV. But thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. You want to say anymore about it? Get a nice feedback loop going.
Well, um, we kept this very, um, we didn't go deep with it because, um, this is a state program and we wanted to, um, make sure that everyone was aware of the website, the new material, and the phone number that they can contact. And I've heard that the helpline with the state is very helpful. Um, uh, and, uh, we were asked if there were other services um, in the area, um, that can assist. Um, a little research, and I'm not sure if it's, um, Daniel, you can help, that SEVCA is available for assistance with this program as well. Um, you can come into our office. Uh, we can answer a lot of your questions, but, um, we still refer you to the state. And there is also a program, um, I believe it's AARP, will come to the senior center. Um, they've already done that this year, but they've come to, right? Am I correct in that?
Yeah, they, they have a program where they have volunteers from the AARP that can help you in person with your tax situation. Um, unfortunately, it fills up pretty quick. I believe you have to sign up by mid-January. Um, so that's how quickly that service fills up. So it probably wouldn't be timed for this, but, um, the one nice thing is that if we do have this video, um, because it is so high-level, it could be evergreen. And then next year, when the state potentially, you know, updates the website with new information, we could then include that as a resource, um, to send people in either November or December of this year.
Updating the blog.
Yeah, updating the blog.
Right.
Around the video.
Right. So I, I think they did a fab- I am pleased with it. I think they did a fabulous job putting it together.
Great.
If you have any other questions to...
Yeah, great. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Seth. Um, so, um, yes, in terms of like tax, um, prep assistance, SEVCA runs a program called VITA, which stands for Volunteer Income Tax Assistance, I guess. Um, and we, I work for SEVCA. Uh, we... And we, I work for SEVCA, we make appointments with people all throughout the year, like, you know, the tax deadline is April 15th, right? And we will be making appointments, you know, right now, all the way up until then. And sometimes, you know, we even help people file taxes after that because it's better to file late than not file at all. I guess that's probably not even something I should say. But I think it's really important for folks to know, right, that like you may be eligible for a credit on your property tax bill, you know, and it's complicated, the whole thing about like what kind of credit you get, but it's possible that your tax bill can have a credit on the municipal side and the education side, or that you might receive only on the education side. But actually, many people are eligible who don't claim that credit and so are actually paying more in property taxes than they need to.
I just had an individual that walked in today that told me they filed their own taxes and I gave them the, this information and I believe they were not aware. They filed the homestead but were not aware of the tax credit portion. The state has included the two forms as one PDF now. So when you click on the form, you're getting both documents. So it's a little bit easier for people to recognize that there's more to what to do. So I think that's helpful as well.
Great. Board members, questions? Liz, I see you Zoom hand.
So I just wanted to mention that the Select Board identified this as a very important element in our budget negotiations because our taxes are high. And this is the one state program that the state recognizes income inequality and provides a mechanism to give people tax credits when needed. And it's particularly important for towns like Brattleboro who have higher tax rates than smaller towns. And I think it's also important, you know, every year when I participate in the tax abatement and tax appeal process, there's always people who are unable to pay their taxes, who were unaware of the homestead rebate credit that would have alleviated their problem. And it's a very real and substantial credit that many people receive. And I think that I commend Seth and Jennifer, and I think this needs to be widely, widely disseminated throughout the town so that all the people who can benefit from it actually fill out the forms and get it done.
Great, thank you. Other board members with questions or comments? Richard?
I just, you did a great job because I, you know, I love things that are simple and right to the point, and that's exactly what you did without cluttering it with anything. And I just wanted to say that.
The information is like critical. I think, you know, for exactly what you said, Jennifer, that people just don't know it exists, they don't know it's out there, they don't know it's available to them, and it can really help them out. So thank you for putting that together. I think it's, I think it's a really good thing.
Great, thank you. I don't want to rain on the parade. What about the renters rebate? That's more complicated or no?
That's the sequel.
It's a good point.
50% of the town is renters.
That's a very good point, yeah.
Okay.
We'll look into that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, something to think about.
Yeah, we'll look into it.
Yeah.
Sure.
I know that, you know, when I was renting and I was, I mean, I ended up not being eligible for that year. I think the thresholds for like the property tax credit may be much higher than the renters rebate. Like you can have actually a pretty high level of earnings and still qualify for some kind of credit. Anyway, that's a.
It's a good point. It's valid.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, cool. Members of the public with questions or comments on this item? Okay, very good. See you in a minute. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it and we look forward to seeing it out in the world. And we'll move on to our next item.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. So next item on the agenda is the Brattleboro Historical Society Historic Signs on Town Properties Request. Would you like to come to this table?
This is fine.
You sure?
If it's okay with you.
Mr. Holiday?
Yes, Bill Holiday.
Hi, Bill.
Brattleboro Historical Society. New society.
Welcome. You wrote us a memo. Would you like to talk about?
Thanks for having me, yes. The Historical Society is in the middle of a project to put historic markers on historic properties in the town. And I think maybe in your packet is a piece of paper, which is the approximate size of the signs that we'll be putting out. And with the help of the Brattleboro Rotary Club, they're reaching out to private businesses that reside in storefronts, for example, in a historic block, like the Granite Block or the Hooker Dunham Building or the Brooks House. Do you have a piece of, I was asked to send and I was, do you see it there?
Yep.
It's just a little bit of a blurb about the property with a QR code at the bottom. And I'm not trying to put the pressure on you here, but if you want to scan that QR code, it'll give you an idea.
Give it a try.
It'll give you an idea of how these signs will work. A passer's by will be able to get a little bit of information about that building. And if they want more, they can scan the code like you're doing now. And I'll keep quiet for a minute.
This opens to a video?
Yeah. I see it.
...of 1869. In October, a West Stone Brook flood had wiped out many businesses and it.
Brilliant.
So that's what it is, and that happens to be the voice of, radio voice that you might recognize, Pete. That's John Clark, the former morning man on WTSA FM and the former station owner. So he's doing the readings for us. So if a property we identify signs on for one of these signs, we'll put it on the building or near the building so the passerby can get some kind of an idea of the history of the properties in Brattleboro. And the reason I'm here is in the hopes that because some of the properties are town properties that you will authorize us to put signs on, for example, this building, the municipal building, Wells Fountain, Plenty Burrows Park at the corner of High and Main Streets. So that's really it. I don't need to go on forever. We'll answer whatever questions you have.
Great, thanks, Bill. Select Board, can I get a motion? Peter?
I'll motion to approve the Brattleboro Historical Society's request to place historic signs at various historical sites around town.
Very good. Are we talking just about town-owned sites though? We're not talking about?
I am, that's why I'm here for you. We're reaching out for private businesses. Amy's Bakery, for example, just today, said yes, we can put one on her property, which is the Granite Block, so.
Great, thank you. Peter, did you want to speak to the motion?
I've already given my permission for him to hang his sign.
Okay, very good. Board members, questions, comments?
You know, I mean, I just, I love this. You can just read the blurb or you can watch it. It looks like the video. I'll watch the rest of it later, but I just, I like something that just sort of kind of thickens the, thickens the fabric a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll distract people from the parking kiosks.
Uh huh.
Not helpful.
Yeah, okay, all right. Liz, Franz? Franz is muted. I'm sure that's not intentional. Liz?
I just thank Mr. Holiday and I definitely think this is a worthwhile enterprise.
Would you unmute Franz? Oh, there we go.
I am unmuted. I think this is great. I love the Historical Society and the information they make available every Saturday in the Brattleboro Reformer. And I'll be looking forward to QR coding these signs in the near future.
Great, thank you. Well, Bill, it sounds like we're in favor, but we haven't taken a vote yet. Is there any members of the public that would like to speak about it?
I was afraid I was the only one left.
No, come on. And there's people on Zoom as well, probably. All right, so Select Board, we've got a motion in front of us to approve the Brattleboro Historical Society's request to place historic signs at various, I would amend this to various town-owned historical sites because we're not approving any documents elsewhere, right? We don't have. Yeah, sure. Just so it's clear. Yeah, around town. Any further discussion? No? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes 5-0. Bill, thank you for your work. I look forward to seeing these signs. And that is the last item on our agenda. We have one other bit of business. Richard?
We adjourn.
Richard has made a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. That passes 5-0 eventually. Thank you so much to BCTV, to the interpreters and town staff and members of the public. We'll see you next time. We'll see you a lot, I think, in the coming months.
John, I got a whole bunch of stuff for you to sign.
Anything for us to sign?